Okay, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of September 21st. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public? Sure.
Hi, can you walk me over here? Okay. Hi, I'm Paige Martineau, and I'm co-president of the NTA, and I'm here on behalf of my micro-president as well as the executive board. We see that you have on Dr. Hallett's superintendent's report and update on masks, and we wanted to let you know that we feel that the masks are going very well, and we hope that you don't fix anything that isn't broken. Obviously, right now, the town has us covered with wearing masks. I don't know how long that will last. You know, we don't know what Dussie is going to do, but we feel quite strongly that they're protecting us, they're protecting our children, and we hope that you will continue with that protocol at least through the end of January. By that time, perhaps the Delta variant will have died down. Certainly, our five to elevens may, at that point, have a chance to be vaccinated. As we all know, the Delta variant, you know, breaks through those of us who are vaccinated, and, you know, we all want to stay in school and be present and be with our kids, and it's been so amazing to be in that position of having our kids with us every single day, and we haven't had any absences yet or disturbances, and the test and stay seems to be going pretty well, at least from a teacher perspective. So we do hope that you support us and continue that masking policy. I know that it's not everyone's favorite, but at this point in time, the kids are really used to wearing masks. It just isn't an issue for them. It has become normal, and I think all of us want to keep the kids in school for as long as we can through whatever spikes happen with holiday visits, et cetera. So, thank you very much.
We have any questions? Questions? As long as my daughter is on the Board of Health, you'd be wearing masks.
Wonderful, I'd like to hear that.
Up to the chair.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
How are your peers at school, is it an issue for y'all at all?
I've seen most people wearing masks, so there's only like a select few, but mostly everyone.
Now, what happens with the select few who choose not to wear a mask? What is that, what is, why are they?
Probably because they don't really want to wear it, but I think the teachers are doing a good job of like trying to, you know, enforce the rules, so.
Okay, so it has to be a mask and not a gator?
Correct, yes, a mask and not a gator.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, we do have the masks, mask mandate as a policy, and that is required, so if students are not wearing their masks, there will be discipline involved, so it is really important that they understand that masking is not optional, it is a requirement, and so that's how we would be dealing with it if it was a repeat issue.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Well, you're going to hear a little bit of a repeat of what Ms. Martineau just said. I wanted to bring the same very topic to the school committee early on, as the commissioner's indoor mask mandates for all pre-K-12 schools are in place until October, at least October 1st. So currently, Nantucket Public Schools, as you heard, fall under the indoor mask policy that comes from the town of Nantucket, so, and we're also under policy EBCFA on face masks, that's a school committee policy that you enacted September of last year. However, there's no clear indication as to when the town mandate may be lifted or whether the commissioner will extend the mask mandate after October 1st. Considering the contagious nature of the Delta variant and thinking back to last year's COVID spikes that occurred after the Thanksgiving and the December holiday breaks, when we had to go into full remote instruction until the middle of January, I would really like to open a discussion about possibly extending the indoor mask mandate under policy EBCFA for all Nantucket Public School students and staff until January 18th, which can then be revisited. So I'm going to open that up for anyone to discuss.
Okay, discussion?
To the chair, why January 18th? Was that, does that have to come back after the winter break?
No, they do come back after winter break on January 3rd, but January 18th will give enough time for anyone who was, who was at any risk, so to speak, and the 18th is after the Martin Luther King Day weekend as well, because there are some travelers also at that time as well.
Catherine, do you have any thoughts?
In my opinion, I think it's a good idea to keep the mask mandate. I know some people aren't going to be happy with it, but in my opinion, masks make me feel safe as well, because I would not feel secure at all if people weren't wearing masks, but other people would beg to differ, so that's just my opinion.
Question?
No question.
If I may, do we know what other schools in the Commonwealth are doing on Cape Cod? Is this, are we replicating what other schools are doing, or?
Yes, yes. Many schools across the Commonwealth have instated a mask policy for the whole year. I did not say that, I just said until January 18th, and then we can revisit. When it comes down to it, there will be only allowance of schools that are at 80% vaccination to be able to not wear masks, so the mandate will still be in place for our young students, and so that's, that's only really going to be most likely high school if we can find out that 80% of the, of the staff and students are vaccinated.
And if I may, under those circumstances, then is, that is when there will no longer be a mask mandate?
So the mask mandate currently is in place until at least October 1st. We have no word yet from Commissioner Riley whether or not he's going to extend that, so if he does not, then it will be in place that you have to have a specific number of students and staff vaccinated, and what he had said earlier was 80%, but again, we are waiting for his information to come out. I, I believe that, and it, and it won't really matter, because if Nantucket has that mandate in place for as long as it has it's in place, we are under Nantucket's requirements for indoor mask.
And are they reevaluating on October 1?
I don't know when they will be reevaluating.
I would be suspicious that a mandate would continue. Can I speak for the other members of the Board of Health, but I think that there's a fairly significant block in there that is in favor of masks. Pauline?
Yes, thank you. I, I support this 100%, and I think that this sort of leads to another conversation that I wanted to bring up tonight, which is, and certainly hearing from Mrs. Martineau about the concern from teachers, now that we're back and we've had a few weeks in school, there are a lot of conversations, whether it's nationwide, locally, around how are we doing for our children's well-being, but I think we also have to look at how are our teachers doing, and also how our leadership team's doing, and how we're all doing back in the building. And so, I don't know if you have any answers for me tonight, but I would be interested in, you know, knowing if there are opportunities or plans to do small focus groups or outreach to people to see how we can help lessen concerns, or are we, you know, I know we're doing everything we can, but are there ways that we can help support our teachers and our leadership in feeling comfortable and feeling like they're being heard and being cared for, because yes, we want to make sure that our students are safe and their emotional wellness is strong, but, you know, it's like the mask on the airplane, you don't put it on the adult first, right? Right? You do that, and then you, you take care of your youngest, so I just, I'd love to have that conversation and know what we're doing to support our school staff.
We can certainly discuss that at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Beth, how many people have opted for the distance learning?
There isn't an option, they would have been home schooled, so they would have requested homeschooling, not a large number.
Okay.
Quite small.
Now, as this is a policy, we probably should bring it up next time and vote on it.
We can, it's in place, I did, I did make copies in case anyone wanted to see it, but it isn't, the one statement at the, at the front does cover us, it says, "Nantucket Public Schools are committed to providing a safe environment as schools reopen during the COVID-19 pandemic." No date, we are still in the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay.
So, the rest of the policy will remain exactly the same, so.
Thank you, Beth.
So there's no need to, to make any sort of a change to it unless you wish to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody up to the end?
Okay, go on.
COVID testing.
So as I mentioned several times over the last several weeks, Nantucket Public Schools is now participating in the Free State Testing Initiative for all public schools. We are offering rapid tests, which are very non-invasive, to any students or staff members who are showing symptoms of COVID-19 or who have been deemed close contacts, so that they could potentially stay in school if they have negative tests rather than having to quarantine. We have sent out consent forms to all staff, all parents and families, and we have around 50% overall of consent forms, so we still have quite a few to receive. So for anyone who's listening at home who has not yet returned a consent form for their student or for themselves, please return it as soon as possible. If you have symptoms or your child has symptoms, we cannot test them without consent, very important. So we are able to do those tests at any time, it's a very quick test, it's only about 15 minutes, and I said, non-invasive, so it is not uncomfortable for children or for staff, and it's, it's quite, quite simple and easy to follow. Currently, the school nurses have issued 15 rapid tests at NES, seven at NIS, two at CPS, and four at NHS, and all have been negative. So I just wanted to send a really big thank you to our school nurses, one of whom is in the audience today, thank you Jessica for all you do. They have taken on this new, this new requirement, this new role, and have done a fantastic job in making sure that we have the, the option to test alongside, of course, of their typical nursing duties, which are usually very busy in the beginning of our school year as we get into the cold and flu season. I want to give a special shout out to Nancy Small, our school nurse at NIS, who has taken on the role of test site coordinator with CIC, which is the testing company that provides the rapid tests and the information, the database software, and any necessary training. So thank you Nancy for all that you have done in getting this up and running. So I don't know if there's any other questions or, and discussions.
If I may, I do have a question in this, so I was sent, as a parent, I've got the form, the consent forms, and I misplaced them. I went into NES, I couldn't find it anywhere on the website. Is there an easier way to make that form more accessible? I mean, after typing in, digging, I was able to find the general form that it's, so I did print it out, but for other parents that don't know really how to work the internet, is there a way to add like a little link or just make it easier to find on the website?
Absolutely, we can, we can make sure that.
We're sending home and backpacks again for.
Perfect.
For everybody that we don't have them.
Good.
And email and in the free language.
Oh, great, great.
But to your point, Esmeralda, yes, we will have the forms posted on our website that people can download and print and then send out if it gets lost, so, no problem.
Thank you.
I have a question to the chair.
Sure.
So when you sent these consent forms, vaccination consent forms, aren't those the same forms I sent home with the field trip?
No, these are testing consent forms, and they are different than our.
Are they all in the same packet?
They were not for this round, they were separated.
Okay, because sometimes you get, a parent, your parent gets this packet, it's this big.
Yeah, no, these were sent out after the packets were sent out.
But I believe what you said, Esmeralda, is like, you know, why can't we just put it, boom, here it is, we're on the district page.
Absolutely, happy to do that.
Look, it's not a deep dive.
No, 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 I agree, I agree.
Huh?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, good, I think that that, really going out and being aggressive after, so that you can separate out the people that are refusing as opposed to people that just missed it.
Happy to, happy to do that.
Teacher and TA substitute, great.
Sure, so as requested by, in our last school committee meeting, I met with the principals to discuss a change in the subpay for our substitute teachers and also our TAs, and our principals agreed that subteachers deserve a slight increase over sub-TAs based on the duties that they must carry out as teachers, as teachers of record for the day. However, we did want to look carefully at the per diem rate for our TAs who are at the entry level in a year-round position, and make sure that, that their per diem rate was not lower than a sub-TA's per diem rate. So therefore, we would like to propose that the rates for a subteacher increase to $150 per day, and for TAs to $130 per day. So glad to open this up for more discussion if you wish.
Ms. Martineau?
I do have a question, if I may. How do you, do you keep track of who's a substitute teacher and who's a substitute TA?
Yes.
Now, there's a substitute, let's say you don't need a substitute teacher, but the TA position is available, do you offer that to the substitute, the person that's available?
Yes.
Okay. And obviously, they can refuse according to, okay, that's the question.
If I may, what, I, I'm not recalling what the TA stipend was prior to this.
So currently, it's $100 per day, and the teacher rate was 125.
Thank you, that, we had the conversation around that they were the same, but that, I agree, I think that seems like a fair and equitable increase.
But that's also the gross pay, not the net pay, correct?
That's what, yes.
So it's not, you don't walk up the door with 125 bucks? Trust me.
Elections have consequences. Pauline?
No, no comment, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so we ought to take a vote on that. Can we have a motion to approve the increase in substitute TA and substitute teacher stipends?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, presentations and discussions of issues of interest at the committee. Now I think you have a lot of slides.
We got some.
Should the committee go?
I think it probably would. It would help for doing that in the front row.
Cue music. Like that one, Bobby? Sorry, sir.
While you're getting settled, maybe I'll, I'll start. My name is Dick Webb with SMRT Architects, and with me tonight, Nick Vaughn, senior architect, leads our education practice group for SMRT, Dr. Laura Green, chemist and toxicologist, who is assisting us on this project, and Diane O'Neil, director of facilities and grounds, and I do see Travis and some other committee members, so good to see everybody, thank you for, thank you for coming. What we wanted to do is just take 10 or 15 or 20 minutes or so, work through relatively quickly some slides illustrating the, the scope and some of the project improvements, and then we, then I will, at the completion of that, turn the presentation over to Dr. Green to make several remarks from a chemical and a toxicological perspective, and then we can certainly open it up to the full board for any questions that, that you or, or the public have. We start with the master plan, and the master plan has been a, a work in progress, quite frankly, for over eight years now. I think it's important to understand that we are blessed with a situation, we have a 45-acre campus that includes all the schools, the school, that is very unique for a public school system, where all schools are located on a single campus as opposed to being scattered geographically throughout the town. What that does mean though, however, is that we need to be very judicious and very prudent in our planning and in the design, so that every square foot of that 45-acre campus is used as appropriately and as efficiently as, as possible. So we have been working with the buildings and grounds and, and facilities department on the development, and the committee on the development of this overall campus. You can see the school buildings located closest along Surfside Avenue at the bottom of the image, and some of the athletic fields that begin to ring the project to the east and to the, to the south. The focus of our presentation at this point, or the, the project at this point, is phase nine of these improvements, and again, it focuses on track and field improvements directly behind the high school here, and also in the lower right-hand portion of the image, the proposed new baseball field and tennis courts that are located off of the Bacchus Lane field area. The Bacchus Lane field area, if you've been following some of the bidding and some of the articles recently, we have attempted to bid the Bacchus Lane baseball field and tennis courts in a variety of bid configurations. Quite frankly, the results haven't been what we had hoped for, and some of the feedback from some of the contractors is just the fact that they, there's not enough project there to make it an efficient bid, so the bids have been coming back much higher than we expected. So what we are focusing now on is to package all of these improvements that you see as phase nine improvements, and I'll begin to hit each one of the items for you in a little more detail. But before I do that, I, I referred to the campus master plan, and these, the blue dots represent phases of improvements that we have undertaken through the years, some of them relatively minor in terms of like phase five was the construction of storage buildings over behind the skate park. Certainly, some of the more major ones, as we're all familiar with, is the construction of the new intermediate school, and a lot of the site work and campus improvements. But we are now, again, at, at phase nine, there are future phases, and one of the beauties of a master plan is that while the future phases have, have a, essentially a priority put to them right now, that doesn't mean it can't change. For instance, right in the middle of the image is a, is a dot labeling "future school." One of the first tasks that we were charged with was if the town needed to build a new school, again, within the confines of our 45-acre campus, what is the most logical, most efficient, most appropriate location for a new school if it were to be built, need to be built? That is included, embedded in the plan, whether that, that could, not sure what phase number that will be, but the point, it's, it's planned for as we, as we embark on now what is, what is being presented as, as phase nine. The need for the campus athletic improvements, really, there's, there's a variety of need. The, the first is just the overall particip, participation rate, which is a good thing. There's a lot of students who participate in athletics here at, at Nantucket, and, but the negative is, we have only so many natural grass fields, it's putting an undue pressure on maintaining a safe, playable field environment. As the campus grows, we always need additional parking, and most importantly, we are the proud owners of, from all our research, the last remaining public high school in the Commonwealth with a cinder track. Not only is it cinder, but it doesn't meet any sort of geometrical requirements or conformance, so we have a, a non-compliant track venue. And again, along with that, our grandstand is old and dated and not needing certain accessibility codes. So again, phase nine improvements focus on, on two areas, the track and field area immediately behind the high school and the, and the Bacchus Lane fields. Starting with the track and field, it was designed as a 400-meter compliant, six, eight, six-distance lane, eight-sprint lane, track oval configuration, very common, very popular, very appropriate for a public high school setting. The inboard of the track oval is a multi, is a field that dimensionally supports play at 210 feet by 360 feet, so that gives us the ability to play more than just one sport. We can play football, it can accommodate soccer, field hockey, and lacrosse. Certainly, working with the athletic department, we'd be focusing, I, I think the intent is to generally focus, continuing to focus on lacrosse and football in that, in that area, but again, it's important to understand that the, the geometry of the track allows for even greater flexibility within that field area. One of the key components is upgrading the lighting for this field. This picture at the upper, an upper part of the slide is our field. These are the lights, they are mounted at heights between about 45 and 65 feet in height. That variation in mounting height begins to create what you can see some of the hot spots and dark spots on the field itself. There is a ratio or a measurement we use, it's called the uniformity index, as we look at that efficiency and the, the equal distribution of the lighting, we have a uniform, uniformity index on this project, project currently of about nine to one. We want to bring that down to about three to one, and that picture in the lower left begins to illustrate that sort of uniformity. So that's one of the goals of this project, is to increase, not the quantity of light, we're maintaining the existing 30-foot candles, but we're trying to improve the quality of the lighting, the distribution of the lighting. Most importantly, as I talked about, the height of the light poles, the lights themselves between 45 and 65 feet, that produces a lot of what we call spill and glare, and that image at the lower left begins to show you how the spill light moves off away from the field, glare doing the same thing. We want to focus that light on the field and only the field, as evidenced in the picture in the lower right. So the proposal is the light poles would actually increase in height to about 80 feet in height, the lights will be right at the top of those poles, and again, to improve that uniformity to a three-to-one ratio. The north side of the multipurpose field will contain a new grandstand system, we are accentuating the grade change on that slight slope and, and making it more dramatic, and there's a very specific reason why we are doing so, we're designing an upgraded grandstand system that would include a press box, but it has, it's called a top and bottom-loaded system, where you have accessibility at the lower level of the grandstand, you also have full accessibility at the top of the grandstand and press box area. Very important, because we are mandated to require, we must provide accessibility to the press box. Many schools throughout the Commonwealth, you'll, you'll notice, have lifts, have elevators, have ramps, have mechanical equipment to get you, provide that accessibility to the, to the press box. We won't need that here, because we're working the grades, building the grade more so that we can provide that accessibility directly from parking areas to the, to the press box. The second field proposed behind the high school here is also synthetic turf, proposed for a little bit smaller dimension, again, multipurpose capability, but primarily focused for lacrosse and field hockey play. Those two sports is differentiated from football, where the teams are on opposite sides of the field, lacrosse and foot, lacrosse and field hockey, teams, both teams are on the same side of the field, and so what that allows us to do is create spectator areas closest to the parking and drop-off area, and again, along the Sparks Avenue boundary, locate the players in a player bench sort of scenario. I want to talk a little bit about synthetic turf, I alluded to that Dr. Green will, will comment on it as well, but we are working with a turf system and proposing a turf system. system and proposing a turf system. This is a sample of it. Very important, it has a woven backing. There are different types of construction of turf systems, many of them have a urethane backing. This has a woven fabric backing. Very important because this sort of turf is much more recyclable when it ends, when it hits the end of its useful service life. Below that turf system, we are proposing a shock attenuation pad, again, for player safety. And the infill material that is actually spread between the turf fibers that we're all familiar, there are many familiar with the kind of the black crumb rubber sorts of product, we're not proposing that here, we're proposing an organic wood product so that it, again, gives us much better, much better performance and it doesn't involve the use, again, of the black SBR rubber. Certainly, we're aware of the PFAS concerns and considerations on island. We will, and these products have been tested to parts per trillion and that is part of our presentation to the town as we embark on securing permits and approvals for it. Again, we are testing to the MAS DEP drinking water standards. Dr. Green will talk a little bit more about this later in the presentation. I touched on sustainability and recycling, important of the selection of the turf product itself. That requirement will be a bonded requirement of the contractor so we can ensure it is done. Typically, what we are seeing now, turf cycle, the life cycle of the turf fiber itself or the carpet itself is generally in that 12 to 15-year timeframe. It is now, we're seeing it less dependent on the amount, less dependent on the amount of play, more dependent just on simple timeline, chronology, translation, impact of UV light, UV light on the field itself. So, fields that are used one time a week or fields that are used 100 times a week are pretty much almost having the same shelf life, same service life because it again, is more driven by the UV exposure. And lastly, Diane has heard me say this many a time, synthetic turf fields are not no maintenance. They are lower maintenance than a natural grass field, but there absolutely is a requirement for maintenance. The maintenance equipment will be included in the project bid. The contractor is obligated to not only supply the equipment, he's obligated to train Joe Perry and Joe's staff on the proper maintenance of the fields. And we actually require that training be videoed so that future staff members can have the benefit of that video. We are also in discussions, certainly as a part of this project, we can open that training up to any other town DPW officials because we know we have another field out at Nobodyer Farm, that we can take the benefit of that training so that they have essentially a training refresher for their field as well. I touched on the need for parking and circulation. The plan proposes two parking areas, a main central parking area between the track and field and synthetic field number two, and also a smaller parking area located immediately off of First Way. That smaller parking area off of First Way provides us excessive vehicular accessibility right onto the field. So, that is where we're proposing the ambulance to be staged and queued during any sort of athletic event on the field. But we are netting 62 more parking spaces on campus, which we feel is an important benefit to the project itself. Moving over toward Backus Lane Fields, the diversity baseball field is proposed as an irrigated natural grass baseball field that literally will be tied into the existing natural grass field. So, the fence that currently exists will be removed. So, it'll be one, the image will be one, a single large field area, but again, with varsity baseball located in this area. We also are proposing the five tennis courts as a part of this project, again, in this extreme corner of the project site itself. So, just to recap some of the benefits that we see of the project, synthetic turf fields increase the playing and program capacity of the fields. Again, very important. We have limited numbers of fields, limited amount of square footage, growing participation rates for the athletes, putting a lot of pressure on the existing fields. Synthetic turf fields also give us the benefit of an extended playing season. We can play earlier in the spring, later into the fall than we can many times on a natural grass field. The synthetic turf fields, one of the beauties of the system is it creates a consistent playing surface for the athlete. So, you don't, in a natural grass field, you might get a hard area, worn-out area, muddy area, dry area, you get a lot of different conditions all within a field. Synthetic turf fields, it's pretty much the same condition everywhere. That helps the players footing and helps the players' safety. From a track and field perspective, we are providing a code compliant track and grandstand venue. And I want to emphasize the last bullet here is certainly, we've all experienced this past 18 months, plus or minus, the need to get outside. The need to get outside and be able to play and recreate safely, both for an athlete's, not only for their physical wellness, but certainly for the social wellness as well. And so, this project affords that opportunity. Again, longer playing seasons, safer playing surfaces. Just some updates on costs. You've probably, we made a presentation to the select board last week. The total project cost at this point, project cost, which includes all of the engineering, all of the inspection, all of the testing, all the other contingencies and escalation that go into this, is proposed at $17.5 million. The school currently has 1.1 of that funded, so the request to capital planning is for $16.4 million. And the schedule is to really focus on finishing the design and engineering this fall. This industry is one that historically, the best, most competitive bids are submitted when you ask for them in December, January, and February. When you bid later into the spring, the bids are not as competitive. So, our goal here is to finish the design and engineering, bid the work. What that does, that affords us an opportunity to go to town meeting in '22 with an actual bid number, not just an estimate. But the goal would be to immediately start construction. We've had discussions with Travis and from an athletic perspective or athletic program, how we would implement this. Certainly, a priority will be the track and field number one. Field number two might be delayed a little bit into the fall, but the beauty of Backus Baseball and Tennis is, we don't have any program there right now. So, that can start essentially immediately as well. It will be an aggressive construction period, but it's something that we feel will, honestly, will benefit the contractors, I think contractors, or benefit the project, contractors like to have a good chunk of work that they can just tackle. And this will, I think this project as it is structured now will give us that opportunity. Just before I introduce and bring up Dr. Green, maybe just in a recap, I think it's important to understand that the proposal here, while it is costly, we view it as really bringing us up to a level that equates to the others' public high schools in the area. This is not going way above and beyond. A six, eight lane, 400 meter track, that's the standard. We're trying to play a little catch-up here, bring us back to the point we have a, we have an athletic facility that, no pun intended, is on a level playing field with many of our fellow schools. So, I'd like to introduce Dr. Green to talk a little bit about some of her experience. She is a pleasure to work with and little bit of history, chemistry, and toxicologist, our toxicology are specialties. She's worked with MIT for over 25 years, many school systems, public and private throughout New England. She has been involved in the discussions and the proposal at Martha's Vineyard. And so, she comes very, very well, not only regarded, but very well qualified in terms of addressing some of these issues. Tim, did you have a question before?
Well, I think the uniformity of the field is great, but I think it does void a certain amount of home field advantage, hence the lights. So, I certainly didn't see a lot of good things about it, but Travis can probably talk about some of the dead spots.
I didn't hear what you said about home field, can you repeat that? No, honestly, I couldn't hear what you said.
Well, I think that this obviates the home field advantage with the lights and the vagaries of the field.
No, I can see your side of that too, but maybe we can talk about this later, but from an athletic standpoint, I think it's, I think it's time. I mean, I think it's time for us to get up with the times and be on a level playing field. And the other islands doing the same thing, you know, Dr. Eppery. So, it's, we need to keep up with them.
Whoa. Shots fired.
He knows what I'm saying.
Is there like a visiting field house or locker room for the visiting team? Because our guys at the football games usually go inside under the announcers and do the other team just go and have time to get out of the field?
The master plan does plan for and include some future buildings. The building, there are no buildings, absent the press box and grandstand area, there is no other structures proposed in this phase of the project. Those are future phases because quite frankly, we, there is discussion about size and scale and scope of some of the team rooms and what might be involved in them. So, to be determined.
So, basically, what you said, if our home team didn't have a place to go during halftime?
The home team won't have the team room building, so they will go to one end of the field or they might go back even into the high school. I don't know exactly how that.
I think we're spoiled here by having that field house. So, I think when we go to island schools, it's one team goes to one end, one team goes to the other, 10, 15 minutes, they talk, then they go back to their sidelines. So, yes, it's nice when it's cold to have the indoor facility, but I think our kids can survive.
And we are, in the master plan, we have space allocated for it, it's just not included in the project at this.
Can I just say something about that real quickly? The committee discussed the buildings, the ancillary buildings, but the price tag kept going further and further north. And our main focus was getting the fields built for the kids because right now, our fields are not in great shape and we aren't up to standards, just like Travis just said. So, I think in this phase, we all chose as a committee to move forward with this plan to get the fields done and then move forward with any old buildings that we needed. Is that fair?
Yeah, very well put.
You mentioned the vineyard and I believe if I'm correct, that they did ultimately decide to go with all grass fields and they did not do a synthetic field. Am I correct?
No, I think Dr. Green can speak more to that. I believe there is one synthetic field that is proposed on the vineyard.
Is the press box going to have the spot up on top?
Yes, the press box will, yes, the press box is actually three components. The two ends are separate scout or coaches' offices and then in the middle is more central PA media sort of functions. In the middle of, in that middle section, there then is a ship's ladder that works up to an outdoor elevated filming platform. So, the filming platform is about 18 or 20 feet above field elevation.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
In regards to field two, Dick, and I probably should have asked this question before, but it just came to my mind, does that have the ability to be lined for soccer?
Yes.
It does.
Yeah, yeah. I think, now, again, understanding that soccer is one of those sports that gives you ranges in playing dimension. Football, a football field is a football field. A field hockey field is a field hockey field. The dimensions are absolute. Soccer is in ranges and it gives you a range of about 195 up to 225 or even to like 180 up to 225, playing length 300 to 360. So, yes, we can do soccer, Travis, in field number two. It won't be a full-size championship 225, 360.
We have six soccers going on right now, so I didn't even figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, totally, totally understand. But it, yes, we absolutely can. And I think in one of the previous committee meetings, we talked about the striping program and that is actually one of the, one of the last things we're going to deal with as, from a design perspective. But there's an awful lot of flexibility in striping, whether it's permanent, whether it's painted. The painting technology is such now that you can literally stripe and paint a field and a week later, that paint will essentially be gone. Or you can make it more permanent, i.e. for a week or for a month or almost for the whole season. So, there's an awful lot of flexibility in the striping program. Even if a field only has one or two sports permanently lined in the field, what we always do is we, when we build the field, they put little tick marks or register points in the field so that when it does come time to, you want to paint the field, you're literally just connecting the dots. You're not having to tape anything off, it's all, it's all there ready for you.
Hi, I'm Laura Green. I'll start by answering your question. As you may know, on Martha's Vineyard, there's a countywide commission, the Martha's Vineyard Commission. There are 16 voting members and the vote to approve the project with six natural grass fields and one synthetic turf field and the synthetic track around that was 10 to 6. However, it's not done because once the county approves it, it needs to be approved at the town level. And the town of Oak Bluffs is in the process now of considering it at the planning commissioner planning board, I'm not sure what the nomenclature is there. So, it's a go from the point of view of the entire county and it's a regional high school, as you may know, but the Oak Bluffs process is in process. So, that may be why there's some, there may be some discussion that I'm not familiar with certainly at the town level. Okay, so more generally, first of all, thank you, Dick, for your lovely words. I'm a chemist and a toxicologist. I'm an independent consultant. I taught environmental health at MIT for 25 years and I'm also a part-time employee at USC PA. And my job here, working with you all, is to help answer questions and concerns that anybody may have on any issues involving the health of players, coaches, with regard to individual player safety and health, and also, of course, protection of the drinking water aquifer. So, in that regard, one of the reasons I think that this particular system is being proposed is that it turns out to be, to test very, very clean in laboratory tests. And as you know, these materials are of course synthetic, so it's important to ask questions of how the synthetic materials would interact with the natural world. The laboratory tests that were done on these materials at Martha's Vineyard showed that essentially, these materials are cleaner than dirt, which is sort of what you'd expect if you think through it, right? I mean, top soil accumulates a lot of stuff from the atmosphere over years, if not decades. There is one ambiguity and that is that the plastic material... There is one ambiguity, and that is that the, the plastic material that is the, the plastic grass blades essentially, when they are manufactured, these blades are what's called extruded. So basically you start with some melted plastic and then force the plastic through little molds that are essentially little holes. And so the extrusion process, and then you cut them at a certain length, depending on what's specified for which kind of field. Now it is true that in making this extruded material, the molds have to be, well, greased is not really the right word, but they, they need to be made slippery enough so that the plastic molds properly. The, there is a polymer used to do that, and that polymer is called polyvinylidene fluoride. And as the name suggests, it's a fluorine-based material. Now it's a plastic. It's not like the individual perfluorinated alkyl substances or PFAS that some of you may be familiar with or perhaps too familiar with if you live near the field where, the airfield, where unfortunately firefighting foams, which are PFAS-based, have, as you probably know way better than many, have unfortunately contaminated the ground, the groundwater and some drinking water. So that kind of PFAS is not at issue here. But it is true that an inert, an inert organic polymer is used in the process and that is fluorine, that is a organic fluorine compound. So some confusion arises because in a laboratory setting, if you were to take this synthetic plastic grass material and essentially ash it, destroy it essentially, sort of burn it for, it's not exactly burning, but it's close enough, and then analyze that material, you will find some fluorine. And that fluorine does come from a plastic, but it's not the kind of fluorine that contaminates groundwater sometimes and drinking water. And it's not the kind of perfluorinated alkyl substances that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and other agencies of course, regulate for purposes of protecting our public health. So while all of this is important, of course, has to do with the aquifer that you all rely on. Clearly, if any of these materials were to contain leachable perfluorinated alkyl substances, that would not be good. So a lot of the testing that's been done is to make certain that under very severe conditions in a laboratory setting, there's no such material that's leached out or leaked out of this sort of product. Interestingly, because perfluorinated alkyl substances have been so widely used in commerce since about the 1950s, 1960s, if you were to do laboratory tests on ordinary topsoil, ordinary dirt right now, you would actually find considerably higher levels of leachable perfluorinated alkyl substances in the dirt because these essentially have a global circulation and we've been using them for decades. Levels have come down over the last 20 years or so, but they're still above, well, they're, they're above what they were in the 1930s and 40s before people invented these materials and started using them. I'll say one other thing, which I think is important to keep in mind, and again, some of you know this very well. When groundwater and drinking water becomes contaminated with PFAS, there's really three and only three sources. The first we've talked about firefighting foams, which interestingly, for certain kinds of fires, oil-based fires or alcohol-based fires, to this day, although people have been working very hard on this, no one has come up with a fluorine-free firefighting foam that works as well on grease fires and alcohol fires. It turns out to be a really tough problem. So to this day, local fire departments, with some exceptions, if, if, if they're in communities where there really is no threat of such fires, then they don't use those foams. But in any communities where you might have, for example, in the vineyard, there was an old barn that caught fire six or seven years ago, that had a lot of tractor and other equipment with a lot of fuel in them. And the foams had to be used in order to save part of the barn. It turned out they lost most of it anyway, and frankly, to make certain that lives were saved as well. But the problem is, when you use that much foam, you wait five or six or seven years, the foam, some of it can seep into the ground and ultimately degrade to a certain extent, not entirely, but degrade to a certain extent, such that it contaminates groundwater. And so today, if you look at data on drinking water in Oak Bluffs, there is about two or three, two and a half parts per trillion of two of the regulated PFAS in their drinking water. Now, the health-based standard is 20 parts per trillion, and so two or two and a half is not problematic, it's safe to drink. But you can imagine that it's disturbing to, you know, get the annual report from your water department and see that there's a little bit of PFAS in there. I mean, it shouldn't be disturbing again, because it's not an unsafe level. And frankly, there's a lot more in fish and a few other things that we eat all the time. But still, it, that can be a source of problem and has been a source of problem of PFAS in, in groundwater and drinking water all over the world. I mean, there's nothing unique about the Commonwealth of Massachusetts certainly. So that's one source. The second source is industrial discharges. There are famous examples, there's a movie called, I think it's called Dark Waters, involving a factory, DuPont used to own it, it's now owned by a spinoff called Chemours. And they made a lot of Teflon back in the day and used one of the PFASs, it's called perfluorinated octanolic acid or PFOA or PFOA, those are all the same chemical. DuPont just dumped it with its wastewater. The factory's in West Virginia and as you might imagine, not to be an East Coast snob here, but as you might imagine, West Virginia's state environmental laws are not exactly the best in the nation, wasn't regulated perfectly legal what they did and they made a big mess. So that's the second source, and it's not only them, by the way, 3M in Minnesota and other large manufacturers. So sometimes drinking water is contaminated because of industrial discharge. And then the third reason, which is a little surprising, you might have read about this in the papers, up in Maine in particular, this was big news. Because we all eat a certain amount of PFAS, it is all in our excrement. And that means it's in sewage treatment, which means it's in sewage treatment plants. And it turns out, they only biodegrade to a certain point and then they just stay at a certain level. So the PFAS going into a wastewater treatment plant, although there is treatment in terms of pathogens, bacteria, right, are, are basically broken down, but certain chemicals are not. So the sludge from sewage treatment plants, which has lots of nutrients in it, and so is often applied to farmers' fields and forests and elsewhere. There's a now infamous dairy farm in Maine, in which this sewage sludge, again, ordinary sewage sludge, was, they're called biosolids, but was applied to these farmers' field. The dairy cattle grazed on these fields. PFAS was taken up by the cattle and then excreted into their milk. And somebody was smart enough to test the milk and it was chock full of PFAS. So all that milk was thrown away and of course, the dairy farmer was very unhappy and I'm sure there's lawsuits. And I'm bringing all this up because at a much smaller level, the same thing happens with all of our septic systems. And so one thing that was important to the Martha's Vineyard commissioners, and I think one of the reasons that they started sort of coming around to the realization that, oh, maybe a plastic grass system, which doesn't have any PFAS, except for this polymer I talked about, might not be so bad, is on the vineyard at least, there are 15,000 septic tanks and about 10,000 of them, I estimate, are right over the watershed. And if you work through the numbers, that's a lot more PFAS going into the ground than, you know, sort of any other source. The good news is, it's still not enough to contaminate the aquifer. So even though septic tanks, of course, discharge right into the ground, there is retardation in the soil, it's not broken down, but it doesn't leach through with groundwater with any rapidity. But in thinking it through, when people are worried about PFAS, I think it's important to kind of have an understanding that the three sources I just talked about, so the sewage sludge or bio solid application onto land, the direct industrial discharge, which again, we don't have a problem with here in the Commonwealth and certainly not on Nantucket. And the, the, the use of firefighting foams, which are still fluorine-containing, those are the three sources. When you look at places around the world where PFAS has been contaminated, contaminated drinking water and aquifers, they don't overlap at all with synthetic turf fields, which is logical because these are not a source of it. But again, I'm sort of harping on this because it's, you gotta sort of go through the details to get a sense of why some folks get misled when they see that there's fluorine in this. There is, but that's not the kind that matters. So that's that piece of it. I should say more generally, I was struck by the process at the vineyard because since it went on forever, and it was all virtual, lots of people testified. And I gotta tell you, the most compelling people to me, as a parent and grandparent, and a scientist, were the young athletes, some of whom were still in high school on the vineyard, some of whom were now freshmen and sophomores and juniors at colleges. And every single student said the same thing in their own words, which was, you know, we were the best athletes in Martha's Vineyard Regional High School. We went to college on athletic scholarships and we are sitting on the bench. These are all field athletes, girls and boys. And the reason we're sitting on the bench is that we don't have the skills that these people whose home fields were synthetic turf had. We just don't have them. The field hockey players said that, the lacrosse players said that, the soccer players said that. The other thing that I found compelling was testimony from a young man who is now a senior at Martha's Vineyard, Martha's Vineyard Regional High School, who said, you know, you grownups have been promising us this since I was in seventh grade and we still don't have it. And I'm going to go off to college next year and it's okay, you know, this is a first world problem, right? But you grownups can't seem to get your acts together and just decide, either do all grass and be done with it, which by the way, had other problems because you'd have to actually clear some forests, because you need to make more grass fields, right, to make up for one synthetic field, given the usage. So, you know, either just vote on one thing and just be done with it. So the other thing that was impressive to me was there's an orthopedic surgeon who works at the local hospital there, who's, who had lots of data about the athletic injuries that the girls and the boys were suffering because the fields are so crappy there. And he was horrified. He said, you know, this is not like a pandemic or anything, but in his experience, and he'd worked at various other places on the Cape, he was sort of in semi-retirement at this point, but he said, you know, I'm astonished that parents aren't more upset about the fact that these kids are getting injuries at levels that they shouldn't get, just because the fields are so chewed up with divots and all these other things. I mean, you guys know this, you know, those of you who are coaches and designers know this way better than me, I'm just a toxicologist. But it was very compelling. I mean, this surgeon was basically saying, how dare you? You know, how dare you guys let your kids play on these crappy fields? I want to answer another thing about the chemistry and then answer any other questions. To my mind, as a toxicologist, the thing that matters most about the fields from the point of view of young children at least, is the heavy metal lead. And so the first thing I did when I got involved in the project on Martha's Vineyard, and I've worked for other schools in, in Massachusetts and in Maine as well, and Connecticut, I guess, and one in New York. In any event, the first thing that I do as a toxicologist is ask for samples of the soil that the kids are playing on now, to see what the lead content is, to see what the cadmium content is, to see what the arsenic content is. And on the vineyard, as you might expect, because it's an older place with, you know, paint chips from various places, there was a medium amount of lead. I mean, it wasn't that concerning to me, but it wasn't, zero. And I, I felt a little sad, I gotta say, as a toxicologist, that there was all this focus on PFAS, because it's sort of new and sexy or whatever, even though it's not new, it's been around for decades, but whatever. There's all this obsession about chemicals that aren't there, and nobody said, oh, like what's the lead content, right? So, so I, this team is going to be taking some, are you calling the team, the project team, I guess? This team is taking some samples and your Diane's colleague, Joe.
Barry.
Right, who, who saw, who samples soil for lots of other reasons, is going to increase his testing so that we'll know as a community, you'll know as a community, what the lead levels are. I expect they won't be zero, of course. I'm hoping they won't be high, they probably won't be high. But again, you've got older houses, older paint, it's something to think about. So, so my job is to worry about stuff and make sure that the tests are being done. And I'm pretty satisfied that the tests are being done here. And I guess we'll all share the data when we've got them, right?
Definitely.
And I'd be happy to answer questions of any kind, either now or later. Yes, sir.
Dr. Green?
Call me Laura.
Laura, is there a safe level of PFAS?
Yes.
Now, it seems across the country that there are state by state, sort of different levels that are acceptable.
Yes and yes. Okay. The reason that states have different levels is that, and I feel sad saying this because I'm a part-time employee there, US EPA has completely failed. And not only under Republican administrations, but under Democratic administrations, for reasons that are too annoying and boring to go into. Each successive administration of EPA has punted. And unlike any other contaminant we care about, whether it's E. coli in drinking water or lead or benzene or radionuclides, the feds set the standards. And that's it. And every water department tests for them and there's a number. And the numbers, you know, based on either toxicology or epidemiology. But there's no federal number for PFAS of any kind, they will be eventually. I mean, the Biden administration says it's working on it, but you know, we'll see it when we see it. So that has left everyone on their own. Now, why are the numbers so different? The numbers are different because actually, there's no reliable evidence that PFAS harms human health. There's no question that if you load up laboratory rats or mice with various kinds of perfluorinated alkyl substances, they get sick. So there clearly are toxicities to these compounds. But unlike most of the chemicals that are regulated in our drinking water or in our air, where we have direct evidence from either clinical studies or unfortunately occupational studies, you know, workers in sweatshops, right? I mean, benzene is a classic example. But interestingly, the men and women, mostly men, who manufactured PFAS, either at DuPont down in West Virginia or at 3M in Minnesota, and there's a big plant in Alabama as well, those workforces seem to be fine. There doesn't seem to be any evidence that workers who are up to their eyeballs in this stuff are actually harmed by it. However, there's a lot of evidence that rats are. And so toxicologists like me are sort of in a bind, like what do you do with that discrepancy? Now, in order to protect public health, what you ought to do and what various states do do is say, well, let's just ignore the fact that there doesn't seem to be reliable human evidence. Let's assume that rats are small people, not a terrible assumption, and let's use the data from the laboratory rat studies and then apply a bunch of safety factors. And the reason you apply a bunch of safety factors is, again, you don't have reliable human evidence and you don't want to make a mistake. So Massachusetts, for example, takes one study, was done in 2006 on laboratory rats, and applies a bunch of safety factors and gets to an allowable level of 20 parts per trillion. Vermont picks a different study and does things a slightly different way. So if you look across the nation, there's like almost a thousandfold, it's astonishing, there's almost a thousandfold difference between some states allowable levels and others. And that's why, it's, we don't really have a good database. Now, you can take that one of two ways. I mean, that's great. Like, if there really aren't known human health effects, then like, what are we worried about? But the thing we're worried about, in addition to the rodent toxicity, is, as I said, and as you all know, some of these compounds break down to a certain level and then not anymore. And so the reason that it's a concern is that when you put synthetic materials that are not made in nature, when you put them out in the environment and they just stick around for a really long time, that's sort of not good, right? That was the problem with PCBs, was the problem with certain flame retardants. So the persistence of various PFAS in the environment, and by the way, the global circulation, right? So, you know, take a polar bear and take some blood out of a polar bear and he or she's got PFAS. and he or she's got PFAS in his or her blood. So that's sort of a creepy feeling, right? So it's the persistence and the ubiquity of these compounds that has led to a reason to regulate. But again, the basis for regulation from the health point of view is, kind of depends on individual groups' judgments.
No, I mean, thalidomide, while it wasn't a persistent, isn't a persistent drug, seemed to be a great sleeping pill for pregnant women, but
Yes.
led to a real disaster.
Well, not in America. Thalidomide was never approved in America because of a remarkably brave female physician at FDA, not an easy thing to be in those days, Frances Kelsey. And she was, she's a real hero. I mean, a lot of people, you know, it was approved in Canada, it was approved in Australia, Japan, most places in Europe. And the same data was shown to Frances Kelsey at FDA, and she said, ah, I don't think so. I'm not convinced. Do more studies. And she got a lot of grief about it from her bosses higher up in the food chain. Because America was really the standard. And then it turns out, of course, her, now, she didn't know why she was suspicious. But she had a feeling, and I'll tell you the feeling because it's so cool. The thalidomide does nothing to a pregnant rat. Nothing to a pregnant mouse. However, a pregnant New Zealand white rabbit, turns out to be an important laboratory animal, the New Zealand white rabbit pregnant animal, birth defects when you give that animal thalidomide. And it took science a long time to figure that out. So now, when we're testing drugs for teratogenicity, people pull out the rabbit. I'm out of a hat, I guess, I don't know.
No, I think with the finding the compounds, PFAS, up by the airport. I mean, initially, it was just on the east side of the airport. Then at my daughter's house on the west side of the airport, it was found in the water, and now at the north side.
Yeah.
But nobody has looked really across the island. Because there was compost that used to be given out that had 17,000 parts per trillion.
Really?
Now, they stopped, stopped giving it out, but it falls into what you were talking about. I mean, I'd be interested to see
Compost.
what the PFAS is in our soil.
Funny you should ask, that's what the
I've done it with deer liver.
Yeah.
We found PFAS in deer liver. We found some PFAS in scolops.
Yeah.
Not huge amounts.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it is ubiquitous in the
Yeah.
It's just a question of whether it's
Well, I'll tell you what, one of the most interesting factoids to me is that if you test rainwater for PFAS, it's about five parts per trillion. Rainwater. So that kind of rains kind of everywhere, right? I mean, it's not enough, again, to be worrisome. I mean, I am convinced that 20 parts per trillion in drinking water is perfectly safe, and higher levels probably too. The federal guideline, it's not a standard, but the federal guideline is 70, for what it's worth. I don't know, as I said, whether Biden's EPA is working on it. I'm not involved in that. If they do come out with a number, I have no idea if it's gonna be 70 or higher or lower, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, any other questions?
Don't eat the dirt.
Well, again, thank you very much. Again, we will be on island a lot through the fall here as we're progressing with the planning and final design and permitting. Certainly, if you have follow-up questions for us, maybe let Diane, reach out to Diane. She can reach out to Nick or myself, or Dr. Green, or whoever. We look forward to that continued dialogue. So thank you again, school board, for the time today.
Thank you.
We're going to have a presentation regarding the summer school program. The school committee can stay in their seats.
If I may, through the chair, I want to apologize. I was supposed to have introduced a new administrator who's been with us, and I appreciate her sitting with us for this time. Ms. Sherri Lewis is our new coordinator of student support and social emotional learning. And I just wanted to introduce her to all of you. Sherri is here, and we are so thrilled that she's with us, working with our guidance counselors and our social workers. So just wanted to give that. And thank you very much for the reminder. Thank you, Sherri, for being here.
Thank you very much for welcoming me. So I just have to, do you want me to do it? I'll keep her with us.
Oh, oh, great, okay. Oh, wait a second, but we need to, can I look at it? Oh, I'm gonna look at it from here. Okay, sounds good. I know, that's what I'm saying.
I can change this.
Oh, got it. Did you raise it?
I just, I know.
Can I see it here? Thank you, thank you.
Find my mouse.
It really is, especially. Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Okay, hi, everybody. My name is Blythe Purdon. I teach kindergarten at NIS. And this summer, I was one of the summer school coordinators. So I ran the Title I program. And before I go on, I just want to say that these two ladies were a huge help, Andrea and Samantha. Because personally, my father lost his battle with cancer on July 15. So I was dealing with all of that while I'm learning to run a summer program and dealing with COVID and everything. So just personally, I just wanted to let you know that. So forgive me if this is how this goes. No, just kidding, it's gonna be great. Okay, so, um, so for summer scholars, sorry, is this what we're gonna, okay. So summer scholars, which is what we called our Title I program.
I'm just gonna get rid of this
Oh, sure.
Little box.
Sure, let's. So this year, the program's kind of split into three. So the Title I is students who are of need of more service and, you know, might have issues at home. So they, so these are all students who get asked if they'd like to come to summer school. So as you see, we have how many? So we sent out lots and lots of invites, K to five, K to eight, I should say. And we had, you can see how many children registered, how many ended up attending. So we had overall around 85 students with an average attendance of about 15 days out of 19. So that was good. We had 10 teachers, two and a half TAs, and one coordinator, myself. So do you want to talk about your staffing?
So hi, my name's Samantha Kodak. Nice to meet the new people on our school committee. Nice to see the returning faces. This is my third year running the multilingual EL summer program. This year, we had a total of 75 students attend. Our average attendance rate was almost 90, which is the best it's been historically, which is super exciting and I think speaks volumes to our families and community, recognizing how important continuous educational experience is for our multilingual learners. Especially after coming through, you know, the really toughest parts of the last few, I'm really gonna say two years of COVID, because that's how long it feels. For our staffing, we had six teachers. We did not have any TAs, and I was the coordinator.
Is this gonna go to you next? It is.
It sure is.
Okay.
I'm Andrea Marr. I set up the Extended School Year Program, which is the special education program. Deb Davis took over for the summer months and supervised on campus. So she and I split the coordinator position. Our program is all about maintaining students, making sure students don't regress. So our numbers are generally pretty, pretty small, and students only who qualify via their IEP or their Individualized Education Plan. So you can see that we had 79 students that were part of our program and 85% of average attendance rate out of 19 days, which is actually a really high percentage for our students. As you can see, we have a very large staff. It was actually a huge issue this year in COVID. As you can see, all over the island, you saw restaurants closing on certain days of the week. We have our busing issue. That was one of our biggest challenges, was finding enough staff to cover all of the needs that we had this summer. We were hiring through, when the program started, trying to fill the needs of, you know, making sure we had enough support for all of our students. We had 15 teachers, 19 teaching assistants. We ended up not being able to find a physical therapist, so we're taking, making sure we do compensatory services now. We had some reading specialists. We even continued with our social worker program, which is really something great that we started during COVID last year. So we were great that, we were really excited that three of our social workers on campus continued working with our students. That's a really great opportunity if those students have somebody to go to over the summer and meet with small groups or individualized. With the Title I program, we shared a music teacher, two music teachers, an art teacher, and we had a math teacher that taught in both our program and the Title I program. So, and in addition, the L. Summer Enrichment Program, they had their own music teacher who catered to the needs of those students. So we were very fortunate to find those staff members. Because those were some positions that we had added this year for enrichment, just to add to the extra opportunities for the students.
Thanks. So let's talk about our summer scholars program. So really, in the spring, when Jen, Dr. Rabel, and I, who I should mention also was extremely helpful to me, when Dr. Rabel and I started to think about what the summer program would look like, we wanted it to be a little bit different, a little bit, I don't know, just very, we wanted it to be more interdisciplinary. So our goals were thinking about how we could keep the learning going and moving up, how we could incorporate this magical island, Nantucket, how we could reimagine and think differently about how we structured our reading block and how we could engage all of our learners. And so really, that's all due, as you all well know, as school committee members who have been through this with us, through the pandemic, it's been very, very challenging in managing remote learning and hybrid learning and the home life. So we wanted to look and feel different, to really bring back confidence and joy in students' learning. So we, so we really thought about these interdisciplinary units. And in the next slide, we're gonna talk a little bit about it. Is this History's Mysteries, which is actually, it's a website, you can go right to it. It's made by teachers in Massachusetts who have built these different units that are interdisciplinary and inquiry-based, inquiry-based, excuse me. So what we had our teachers do is have two days of professional development, not just one this year. We brought in a fantastic consultant, Cami Condi from Salem State, who worked with us to help us build our, really what the five weeks would look like and what the students would do each week. And we also, she also was there for us to help us with our PD on guided reading instruction, because as you'll see as I go through this, that was a main component of our program. And also, to continue the adult learning as well as the student learning, we had PLCs, professional learning communities, once a week after the school day ended. So in our K to two program, they took the idea of the then and now, which was a unit from History's Mysteries, and really, I couldn't have asked for more. I mean, these, these ladies, Liz Dami, who I'm sure there are people in here whose children have had her in kindergarten, was phenomenal. We had Jennifer Roberts, who I wish would be a year-round resident, but she is only a summer, but she was phenomenal too, and really took to this idea. And of course, Dylan Perry was in grade two for us. And so the students thought about what life was like on Nantucket then, in the early colonial times, and during the whaling industry, and then what it's like now. We also went on field trips. There's, they went to the, we went to the oldest house and the oldest windmill. I got to go. I had never been, so that was fun. And so as you can see, there was lots of group work. They created different posters and different murals. They also researched what it was like. They used primary sources and artifacts. We had connections with the Nantucket Historical Association. And they also did a lot of writing throughout the summer. Their end-of-summer project was a beautiful book all about their house, what it looked like then and what it looked like now. And each, it was a progression from grades K to two in their depth and understanding of what they did. So the funniest part, I have to say, is Jennifer Roberts, who I didn't know, I interviewed her on the phone, was very excited because she, when we were doing our PD, because she said, oh, this, this book, Thy Friend Obadiah. And she had named her son actually Obadiah, and she got really into it. So they used this literature, which I'm sure native Nantucketers know this book. I didn't know it, but they, and the kids, and we did, I should say, Jessica, we had Jessica Held as our art teacher for K to six, K to eight, excuse me. Phenomenal, again, at NIS. What a lucky kids over there. They did these beautiful houses in mixed media as part of their special, as part of going to art. In grade three, four, and five, their big idea interdisciplinary unit was all about mapping. And the teachers thought, at the PD, they came up with the idea of mapping the shipwrecks of Nantucket. So they, they set up the field trips to the Life Saving Museum. They, this group got to go over twice during our program. Again, we had Allison Johnson in grade three, who was wonderful. And Jennifer Lewis, I have to shout out, because she really, we had a kerfuffle, a little staff snafu right at the beginning, and she took it and ran with it and did grades four and five for us. So I was like, whatever you want, I will do it for you. Thank you so much. And so anyway, so then they also, this is another one, and I'm not sure whatever happened to this mosaic. Oh, it's at NIS, wonderful. So you should really go by and see it, it's very cool. They've got all of their shipwrecks on there, and the kids did all of that. And this is a picture of them making shoals out of clay at the Life Saving Museum. And then more photos from the Life Saving Museum. And they also went to the Whaling Museum. And so I really feel like, especially for a lot of these kids, I know, growing up in a community where you think, oh, I'll always get to go see Abbott Hall or whatever, you know, probably a lot of these kids don't always get to go to these places. So that we got to expose them to this, I think, was wonderful. And now, the other signature part of our program was this small group reading instruction. And we had a literacy team that would come in every day to each of the K to five, I mean, yeah, yes, K to five classrooms. We had Jean Murtaugh, who's at NIS during the year. She was our literacy specialist. Anne Harrington, who I know is a TA in one of the districts. I didn't know her, but she was wonderful and took right to it. And Karen Murtaugh, who's a college student, and Jean's daughter, was our other TA. So these, these ladies came in, and just like it says here, it was simple. Every kid reading at their instructional level every day for at least 40 minutes. We utilized a lot of outside classroom areas. We had yoga mats for the kids to use. Of course, as you can see, our students were masked during the summer. A lot of school districts decided not to do that, but we kept with it. So I appreciate that school committee for keeping that with us. And so, yeah, every, and you'll see, one of our And so, yeah, every, and you'll see, um, one of our teachers coined it a SWAT team that would come in at his certain time every day. And it was, and the classroom teacher also took a group. So, um, you know, I think this is what can happen when you have collaboration and collegiality and people are okay with just letting it, you know, going with your kid, you know, kids and kids. So I think that would be good. And then I'm going to let you talk about CPS because my mother, I was doing this presentation. She goes, oh, is that a man from Nantucket? I said, no, that's Michael J. Fox.
So the theme, the History's Mysteries theme that the middle school used was free speech, which was a very engaging topic for our students. And Jess Held worked with the students. They created, they did research on activists who benefited from free speech and really stood up for free speech. And they made these multimedia portraits of the activists that they researched. And here's some, they also had a math class with Nick Lydon, who works at the,
Lighthouse School.
Yes, the Lighthouse School. And she was fantastic and did project-based learning in math as well. And then, um, let me have that off on somebody? Okay, so we really wanted to make sure, you know, not just anecdotally, did things go well? We wanted to find the data. And so it was five weeks of instruction, and we looked at how much students grew in their reading. Because we didn't want it to just be maintaining their reading level. We actually, because we saw some, some gaps in learning after COVID year, we really wanted to accelerate their learning. And what, the average was two points, two, six months of growth in five weeks, which was really exciting. And you can see the graph, the pie chart on the bottom right shows, and the chart there shows there were some students who made incredible growth, you know, nine to fifteen months of growth. There was only one who did not maintain, seventeen students maintained their reading achievement. But we, for us, that's a win because there are a lot of students who really regress in the summer because they don't have the continued reading that they're doing during the school year. So we were really thrilled with, with the, the growth of our students in reading. The outcomes from six to eight, we didn't have the same model and the same assessments in six to eight. We used the MAP reading growth scores, which we had from June in the middle school. And then we did a MAP screening in August. They were very close together, and you can see that the increases were very small. I don't think it was, they were, it was a sensitive enough test to really show the, the increase. We also didn't have the SWAT team approach to reading, which we found to be so successful in K-5. We just, it wasn't set up in the same way. I think that's one of the things that we want to think about doing for the middle school next year because it was so effective. What we did see more progress on was in their writing progress in the middle school. And the biggest increase was just in the number of words students were writing. So, you know, really, we worked on stamina in writing, which is, is a big issue. So you can see that the, the increase, some of the students were, you know, two hundred to four hundred percent increase in the number of words. I'm not going to read this to you, but it's in your, your presentation. There's a, you can see on the left, there's a pre-assessment, two sentences, and then the post-assessment. And on the right, the pre-assessment and the post-assessment, but I had to cut off because it was so much longer. So you can see how their, their, just their stamina increased and the length of their writing. We also funded through the ESAR grant, NHS credit recovery. In the past, this has been something that if students have failed a course at the high school level, they've had to pay for the course. We fully funded the courses that they took. And Andrew Viselli and Ella Potenza worked with those students. They were very flexible. Some students came in and worked in person. Some kids worked virtually. Andrew and Ella were in touch with these students every day of the week, seven days a week, trying to find ways to really help them succeed. There were thirty-eight students who were invited. Thirty-two of them took classes. Twenty-four of the students, as of the beginning of August, successfully completed classes. Some of the students elected to stay and continue working on them. So that number is actually higher now according to Andrew. There were forty-four courses attempted and twenty-nine of them were successfully completed, which means that's that many courses that students did not have to retake, which is great. And then are some, some are, these are some slides that Allison Ritter, our music teacher at the elementary school, put together. She had a ball with the kids, really doing a lot of fun stuff with music. And I'm not going to play that, but you can see just the joy that students had. We didn't want summer school to be a chore. We wanted them to, it was such a hard year. We really wanted to have students experience joy in learning, and you can see that for sure here. Um, we did kind of a post-mortem, if you would, and asked, you know, what went well? What do we need to improve? We surveyed the students as well. We're still getting survey results from, from families about what worked well and what didn't. But you can see some of the feedback there. And what we learned for next year, definitely the dedicated literacy times should stay. That worked so well and was so successful. We provided snacks for students this year for the first time, and that was a real push from the year before, where kids were coming in and they were hungry, and kids, hungry kids can't learn. So that's kind of a non-negotiable, we think, and we may even want to expand it and actually have a breakfast or a lunch. Field trips were a huge part of the program and really supported place-based learning. Professional development and PLCs should be enhanced. Teacher said, who experienced this, said, I learned as well. And that's an important part of, of the process, is to make sure that our, our teachers are learning. The literacy SWAT team approach should be applied to middle school literacy classes, we decided. We also said we need to reconsider the assessments. The math assessments did not go as well as we had hoped. The kindergarten literacy assessments, we, we were kind of playing with some different kinds of kindergarten literacy assessments that were more sensitive to kindergarten growth. And reading motivation and their self-efficacy measure, we were thinking about including one of those next year because anecdotally, we just heard a lot from students about how much more confident they felt about their reading, that it was, you know, we felt like we need to capture that somehow because we felt like that was a really big result, outcome of the program, that, that kids who were struggling in reading felt more confident after the summer. And that's what it's all about because confidence gives, they read more, and the more they read, the better they get. So also, we had a, just, it's hard with three different programs and a lot of students and the needs of the facilities department who have to prepare the, the buildings for next year. The space was a huge challenge. We did use some outside spaces where we could, especially when we broke kids into smaller groups. But we were actually in CPS and in NIS, and that was a challenge.
Got my steps in.
Yeah, we definitely got our steps in this summer. So that was a challenge that we are hoping that will be in one place next year. Any questions for Title One before we move to the?
Okay, I'm going to speak on behalf of extended school year again, specifically. So as I said before, our goal is to maintain the progress made based on the IEP goals and prevent regression. So our program looks a little bit different because there are therapies involved specialized reading, which focuses on things like Orton Gillingham or Wilson-based, like very specialized rather than just a normal guided reading group. Those do occur, but in the classroom. This is something that's pull-out reading, that's extra intensive. We had social work and we had small groups with the targeted instruction. And that might be that guided reading or strategy group piece that you would see in the classrooms during the normal year. We also had reading, writing, math. Life skills and executive functioning is a big part of it. That happens in all of the programs, including, we have the IDSC programs, which are for our significant need students in addition to the general classrooms that are more reading, writing, and math-based. We also this year had enrichment, and that was something we added because of COVID and just to accommodate, we had to accommodate our schedule to meet the busing schedule and the schedule of the other programs. So we added in art, music with Title One. And we also had visits to the garden, where the students, you can see in those pictures, got to visit the garden and do some, some work in there, and I think they enjoyed it. There's Mr. Ganella, he was showing off his playlist. He was very excited about that. He was continuing to do that. That was one of those things that people started doing over COVID, and he was one of the people who picked up on that and loved it. So a lot of people are keeping that, I heard, definitely in the upper grades. So here's some students working. You can see the students in the music room, the art room, engaged in some activities. And here's some more students doing some hands-on things. We tried to get them outside as often as possible to do learning outside. This is something that we've always kind of engaged our students in, anything hands-on that we can do. This year, we looked for a little bit something different for curriculum because we were looking to kind of move our students forward, fill those gaps. And I did some research, and Lucy Cawkins' units of study is what the elementary and NIS are, what we use for our programs. So they were doing a lot of advertising, and they were doing a lot of research and asking a lot of schools, you know, what, what, what'd you guys miss during COVID? And what they did was they developed these programs to fill in those gaps and push students forward. So it was like an accelerated but filling in gaps at the same time. So I did some research, attended some online webinars, which was one of the great things to come out of COVID is you never have to leave the house and you can learn all sorts of things and do all sorts of research. And was able to find out that they had some great units that we could offer. So I talked to liaisons, I talked to classroom teachers, and found out the right units for our special needs students. So here's some quotes from Lucy, and it was great because it, it met the goals that we wanted to, you know, make sure that the kids were not losing anything, they were continuing on with their curriculum, and like going back and redoing last year's. And that's always been the goal of ESY, is to make sure they're getting a refresh of last year, so they're not going to lose anything. But this Lucy curriculum had all those, like every piece that we were looking for in it. And another great thing was they had virtual professional development. So it was teaching our teachers how to do it, and it was very cost-effective, which was amazing. And they could do the professional development online before the summer started. So I was very happy to see that it aligned so well, and the teachers are very excited to learn something new because they were brand-new units and they were what they needed. I got some good feedback. We were pretty spot-on with what we selected. And because we ended up getting their online units, so like they could play the video, but some teachers, I was like, if you feel comfortable, watch the video and then teach it yourself. If you're not comfortable, show the video and then teach from the video. So they took what their comfort level was with this philosophy and went from there. And a lot of times they had to reteach because of their population. Sometimes they went back and did some, you know, reeled it in. So that was the great thing about it. There was a lot of flexibility with it. And we got some great, great units out of it. Fourth and fifth grade, they have these kind of neat units that were based on graphic novels, which if you're not familiar, it's like, they're basically comic strips and books. And so they're very engaging. The students got excited about them. And it led them to actually writing their own comics. And it had like a phonics, phonemic awareness base in the reading and writing lessons while engaging them in all of these other pieces. So it was a really great thing, and the fourth and fifth graders had the same thing going, just, you know, different levels for depending upon who the students were. And the class sizes were so small that the teachers were able to adjust it for the teachers and for the students. Math instruction varied according to who the students were. Most things were hands-on. We did supplement with ZERN when appropriate. It was really to target the goals in the IEP, make sure they're not regressing. A lot of that was reviewing math facts, making sure that they're, you know, got, have those things under their belts so they can move forward, basic skills types of things. And this was one of the classes, this was like their kickoff, end of summer. They did a, this is how we make a root beer float. I was going to bring in the material so you guys could do that, but, you know, probably melted by now. So I'm sure you can all figure it out if you want to go home tonight and work on that project. That can be your little homework assignment. So that is ESY. If you have any questions. All right, thanks.
So I'll be talking about the Title III, the Multilingual Learner Summer Enrichment Program. So our goal was, as always, to provide a safe learning environment that was also fun and engaging for students, particularly for our multilingual students. We know and the research supports that they need continuous exposure and continuous practice in their second language in order to continue growing their skills and not regress. So we had nineteen days with our students, and we have the most amazing staff in our program this year. Sorry, but it's true. So with our nineteen days of instruction, we measured students' growth on a pre- and a post-assessment, both in their oracy, so their oral language skills, as well as their written language skills in English. And in those nineteen days, all of our students, all, each one of the seventy-five, improved by at least one level. And the way English as a Second Language Instruction works is it breaks down language into three levels. So at the very base is the word, the new vocabulary words, the new concept words. Then you move up, and there's the sentence level, which is more about the grammatical structures. And then you move eventually into the organized coherent discourse level. So our student rubrics, both for their oracy and their literacy, measured these three parts of their language growth. And all of our students improved in both their oracy and their writing by at least one level in one of those. So it's not like, you know, they went from a one, which is the lowest level, all the way up to being totally proficient native English speakers. But there was significant growth across our grade levels. And I have to say, Ryan Mellon taught our fourth and fifth grade room, which happened by the students who got invited and attended, to be very low-level English language learners. And Joanna Spring taught our sixth through eighth grade room, very similar population. They had the most growth. So all of those students who came in and were the quote-unquote lowest, made the most growth. In fact, a lot of our fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth graders made over two points growth in nineteen days on this rubric, which might not sound super impressive, but like as an educator, I like saw it and I like had like a teary-eyed moment of, wow, it's working, like what we're doing is meeting these needs. We also had a teacher rubric that I used for walking through the rooms. We introduced it in our professional development days at the beginning of the summer. And it basically is a rubric set up by Jeff Swires, who's a really big expert in the field of English as a Second Language Instruction. And it breaks it down into what level of questioning our students, our teachers asking students, how much student-to-student interaction is there, and what are the supports of the academic language, as well as the physical setup of the classroom to make it accessible. All students ended the summer scoring a ten or higher, which is pretty phenomenal considering you can only get twelve points total. And especially when we reflected back and, you know, had the discussion in our professional development weekly meetings and had them look at their first rubric compared to their last rubric, teachers grew from being a five on the rubric to being a ten in nineteen days with five sessions of professional development. So again, I'm sharing this to brag about our teachers and our staff because the staff we had in our multilingual program are all either TAs, graduates, or teachers year-round in our schools. So this just shows like our talent base here is strong. I have some quotes for you. We did a survey as well for our staff. These are just a few snippets that sort of summarize the various quotes I got from teachers. There was a general consensus that not only was summer school well-run for the academics, but the social and emotional part of summer programming was also very strong. Teachers, again, like on Title One, shared, like teachers want more learning. They want to learn how to be a better teacher. It's inherent in the nature of the job and the nature of the people who choose the profession. And I do agree with what Jen Rabel shared, which is that, and this is something I've brought to this committee a few times, but the food piece. Kids can't learn if they're hungry. We had kids who would show up and just because of the busing crisis that we have, would be getting on the bus at like six fifty in the morning and getting to school at like eight. would be getting on the bus at like six fifty in the morning and getting to school at like eight. And then getting on the bus in the afternoon at like twelve and not getting home until one or one-thirty. And like giving a snack in that timeframe, especially for our youngest learners, wasn't sufficient. Like I, this quote about the hunger is this one, every single teacher wrote about their kids being hungry. So I do think that's an important thing for us to consider going forward. Our curriculum is, um, built and developed with a lot of support by myself, uh, my ESL colleagues in department. Um, and we had a science curriculum. Every day, students did hands-on science activities and experiments. Um, in kindergarten and first grade, they did a lot with forces and motions, pushes and pulls, gravity, friction. In the second and third grade combined classroom, we had, they did, um, states of matter and the water cycle. And then in, um, the fourth and fifth grade combined room and the middle school combined room, they did a lot of work with biomimicry and sort of that, um, engineering side of like steam of like, here's a problem. Here's my questions, here's my hypothesis, here's my invention, I think, might solve the problem. Our ELA curriculum, um, was very closely aligned with our science one. So students would do the hands-on science experiment and then learn how to discuss it, learn how to write about it, learn the specific features and genre-specific language that they needed in order to grow those literacy skills. Um, and you can just see, these are a lot of anchor charts, but I had to share them because it's just phenomenal. Like with one hour of prep a day that our teachers are like creating all of this support for our students. Um, in the kindergarten room, just based on their literacy skills in a, uh, semi-post-COVID, still-in-COVID world, they made a class book, um, which was super perfect for where their skill set was. In first grade, each student had a journal and made their own page about each type of motion they were learning about. The second and third graders made a, their own little mini like water cycle report. And fourth through eighth graders actually made like a little presentation in a Google slide that they shared not only with their class, but they actually traveled to the younger students and were able to present to them, which was engaging for both of them. Um, and also very motivating for our middle school students who wanted to be able to, you know, show off to our second graders. Um, math, we use Zern. There were a few just like glitches and just issues in terms of like ages of kids and tech skills using it. So a lot of our staff would use Zern, do the fluency warm-ups, the application whole-class problem, which is like a word problem and was very language and discussion-based. And then would move into either Zern as a center for independent work. And they also use something called G-Fletchi or three-part tasks. Um, and the students really took to it. And the basic idea of the G-Fletchi is you start with the inquiry. You don't like give them the solution or give them the way to get to the solution. So again, was a really great way that these teachers sort of adapted and made it very focused on what our English learners needed, which is more work around discussing their reasoning and their mathematical arguments, as opposed to being able to do the rope calculations. We had an amazing music teacher who is now, um, an ESL teacher in the middle school. Her name's Kailani De Lima Diaz. And it was actually a tri-lengual music class. Um, she speaks English, Portuguese, and Spanish. And so it was super fun to get out there with her and just hear the kids speaking to each other in their own languages and then like crossing the language boundary and being like, oh, in Portuguese, he said this, I'll tell you in English, then you can tell her in Spanish. It was really cool to see that communication and that like cognizant, like ability of our older English learners to be like, oh yeah, I know this language, you know this language, we can just like make a change. Um, she did a lot with, um, rhythms and patterns using both their bodies. You can see with sticks, she had drums and other musical instruments. And they transitioned from that into creating their own patterns and beats and songs, as well as she brought in the visual arts and would present different pieces of artwork and play a song or a tune or a student's song and ask them like which sound from this song, like do you, would you pair with which artwork? And it was cool to see them explaining that and really thinking about like, oh, when it's a lower tone, it makes me feel sadder. So I think about this blue painting because blue is a sadder color to me. It was just fascinating to see all the ways she brought language and higher-level thinking into music, which is an area I feel like a lot of people sometimes think is like a special and fun, and it is. And she did such a fabulous job weaving in the language piece. Um, successes, we had seventy-five students. It's the most we ever had. It's not a super huge jump um, from either of the two previous years, but it is growth. Um, every student in our program grew in the areas of oracy and literacy. We had weekly PLCs that were targeted to what teachers identified in their pre, um, survey as areas that they wished to learn more about or areas they felt they weren't as comfortable in. And in their post-survey, they, um, not only rated our curriculum out of like four, but, um, they also stated on a sliding like scale that they all felt more comfortable with the really language-heavy pieces, which I found fascinating, but also sort of like hopeful that like, you know, they want, like teachers all want to learn how to be better at what we're doing. Um, and then we were so grateful that we were able to add music this year, like the other programs that have an enrichment piece. Um, a lot of our students who attend these programs sometimes don't feel that they're that great at school, they're not good. And so having a non-academic time for them, I think, was also a huge component in our attendance being so high this year. Um, suggestions or considerations for future summer programming, definitely the food. Um, I know there's an issue with the staffing and figuring all of that out. Um, just something I bring up, think it's important, hungry people can't learn, hungry kids can't learn. Um, I'd love to find someone or talk to people, brainstorm about opportunities for our high school multilingual learners. A lot of them work, so I think that programming would look very different. And I think there's a way that we can still engage them in life skills such as, how do you apply for a job? How do you apply for college? How do you write a resume? What kind of skills do you need for an interview? Things that'll help them have more options in their future. That's the whole point of all of our programs is let's give our students as many choices as possible. Um, we did not have TAs. A big thing from especially our kindergarten, first grade and second and third grade teacher is they need TAs or we need the class sizes to stay small. Personally, I'd prefer to have a bigger class, more kids and have the TA. It just depends on how the budgeting and the funding all work. Um, this might be just for this year, but we did only have two buses for the whole program and our bus drivers did the absolute best they could. And it is so overwhelming just standing on a bus, trying to talk to the bus driver and having three kids per seat with masks and windows open and everyone's tired and it's hot and it's rush hour. So one thing the bus drivers asked me to bring up is if we're going to continue using buses, perhaps considering a bus monitor assigned to each bus we're using. And then the last one, um, is actually what I was surprised by, but people at first did not love the extra hour in the schedule of the day. And then they decided they actually need more time because for our youngest students, like our kindergartners, they don't get choice or play and it's hard to fit in like a phonics foundations lesson into the whole day with everything else. Um, so those were the suggestions I got from myself, from Patty and from the staff.
And, um, I just want to, if, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Patty Obi and I'm the new E L L director. I arrived here in July. This program had just begun and I had the privilege of watching this unfold with seventy-five students. I want to thank each and every teacher that made this possible because it is an incredible program and they offered amazing things to our students. What I would like to do right now, and I promise thirty seconds, it's not any longer, I would like to just show you a little experience that Samantha had mentioned with the three-step math problems. So here we go. I hope we go. Request access. We're not gonna have, nope. Well, we were. You have to request access.
Who did it?
Me. Sorry. Samantha, can you pull up the video quickly?
That's thirty seconds.
Yeah, I know. Mission failed. So the students The students actually watched a thirty-second video. The thirty-second video consists of, and I'll send every one of you the link, consisted of a video with no words, just a picture where a person built a Pringle Ringo. What is a Pringle Ringo, you ask? You would have seen it on the video and you will see it in the link. But you each have a can of Pringles, so you can go home and try to build your Pringle Ringo. And don't eat them first. Then you have to do, the students did estimate how many Pringles, count how many Pringles and have a discussion about not only how many and the mathematics, but also about building and architecture and STEM. So she did an amazing job. You don't, Rocky, you don't want the chicken flavored Pringles? No, that's okay. I'm sorry. That's all right. So all the plans failed, but I took a risk. Anyway, so hopefully you'll be able to go home and build a Pringle Ringo and I will be sending you that link to watch the video.
Um, are there any, I know it's late, I know it's eight, are there any?
I have a question. Um, out to the chair. Do you see opportunities for NHS students? Um, is there any school or career that can be offered in the summer for students?
Um, I am not sure. That's a great question. I'd love to explore like pretty much any option. Our biggest issue in the past is we have some pretty phenomenal ESL teachers at the high school who really try their best to recruit kids so we can make the case for why we need the funding for a high school staff. And most of the kids are like, look, miss, mister, I want to come. I have to work. I'm helping my family pay rent.
You say there's opportunities for NHS students, but couldn't they get a credit?
I don't know. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering is I don't know what the opportunities are for them. I'm open to any opportunity for them.
Rocky, we would be happy to have discussions with you when we begin planning the new summer thing because I have some ideas and I'd like to connect with business owners.
My other question was, um, you talked about is, is how to present, you said we need to go to the interview, not via Zoom or a face-to-face interview. Some kids might have anxiety because they've never had to interview. Eye contact, eyes out. Here, here we are.
Totally.
I think that's moving forward. I think that's, I'd love to see some on that.
I absolutely agree. And I know a lot of our high school students who feel like there are jobs out there that they see posted or that they hear about that they don't apply for because they're too nervous and too anxious. And so I agree. Totally.
Bobby's not scared.
Uh, I liked the music portion. I liked that you're, uh, putting in specials until the day. Uh, I do have a little concern though about the food. When kids are arriving late, should everybody eat food there in case they're hungry?
So this year was the first year that we actually had like a programmatically supplied food. Thank you, if I didn't say this, Linda Peterson so much and her staff. Amazing, incredible.
There you go.
Exactly. Um, the long and short answer of it is prior to this year, teachers were basically feeding the kids that showed up themselves out of pocket. I did it. The staff in previous years did it in all programs. The issue, as far as I understand it, and I might be wrong, is we just can't get the staffing to work for the summer. It's not that we don't have the funding or the interest. It's really a matter of staffing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You don't need anything, right?
Good evening, um, Martin Angelov, Director of Finance. Um, I'm providing a transportation update tonight. Um, and, uh, it's, it's, it's been a challenge. I mean, everybody's aware, it's in the media. It's, it's not just the local media, nationwide, statewide as well. It's, it's been a problem. Um, last year, as you know, there were strict limitations when we opened the school year. So, uh, we had five hundred and eighty-eight eligible students for bus transportation, meaning they live outside of the one-point-five miles and, uh, are eligible to be transported to and from school. Um, but we had severe, uh, limitations, uh, on capacity. We had four buses going at one hundred and thirty-six students, uh, in total capacity. So, um, that lasted up until April fifth. Um, limitations were lifted. A lot of, uh, the bus drivers by then were vaccinated, so they came back. We had six buses. Um, just as an aside, uh, in normal operating, um, flow of, of, uh, busing, six buses can transport four hundred and twenty-six students. The last year prior to COVID, uh, we transported three hundred and seventy-five students. And, uh, last year, um, overall, we managed to transport two hundred and seventy students. Um, and, um, that was around forty-six percent of the total students being eligible. And, um, huge credit to Linda Barrett, who is now retired. She, um, she managed the pro- program, um, as a coordinator and then was a bus driver as well. She has now retired. And that, um, has caused some disruption in the routing, obviously, and then we've spoken about this already several times. Um, this year, I sent an earlier version, version of the, of the, uh, transportation update contained a seventy-seven student, um, um, being transported on the four buses we have. Uh, yesterday evening, I got another update and then actually we have one hundred and thirty-one confirmed students being transported. And what I mean by confirmed is, um, it's, it's challenging. I spoke with all the, uh, the, uh, assistants at, at each individual school and they, they do a great job to the extent they can, but it's difficult to know which kids are actually taking the bus. Um, I did send an email to Cape Cod Collaborative and, uh, but it, it went on, um, Friday morning, so I didn't get a, an update. If I do, I will inform the school committee if they have any kind of update as far as the actual numbers that are on each bus every, every morning. Um, we have a waitlist as well. It's maintained. Um, there is a shared, um, uh, spreadsheet. Kudos to Jane Melville, who has taken on this burden and created the spreadsheet and circulated it around to each, uh, school and they each use the same, uh, sheet. We have about fifty-five kids, um, confirmed on the waiting list. Um, different reasons why buses are not running, even the four buses are not running at full capacity. It has to do mostly with, with, uh, with routes. Obviously, we have, um, uh, Skonset and then we have Maraket who are far away places and, uh, there isn't that many students, uh, living in, in those places, but we still have to serve the, the ones that, that need transportation. And, uh, um, so more, the, the, the more packed, if I can say that, or, or full buses are the ones that are in the Mid-Island area. Well, that's around Old South Road, the, the airport, um, all the area around Evergreen, um, that, that goes back. So, um, th- those ones are, are the fullest and the ones that go to Maraket and, and Skonset have confirmed, again, uh, I use this word, uh, around twenty-five kids, um, on the bus. Communications continue on a daily basis. Um, uh, Dr. Hallett, um, um, has, um, has done a great job communicating with Paul Hilton. We communicate directly with Hyannis. The challenge being we yet, we are yet to, to have a point person on island that everybody can reach out to. Um, Cape Cod Collaborative now have zeroed out on a, on a, on an individual that might be taking on that role. But, um, so far it hasn't happened, so we're hopeful that it's going to happen in the, uh, in the near future. As to, uh, finding two more drivers for the la- large buses, obviously with, we, everybody knows, um, that Cape Cod Collaborative is looking uh, for drivers. Anybody can reach, uh, to our offices for, for that, um, in any kind of, uh, um, myself, I, I offer my, my, my contacts, um, to be the, to be the person for that and I'll relate the information to, uh, to Cape Cod Collaborative. Spat, transportation, uh, we have thirty kids, uh, that are, uh, on the bus, um, and five private students. The private students, uh, obviously they attend private schools, so we've offered compen- compensatory, um, uh, notices to, to the, to the parents, uh, which is reimbursement, uh, for, for, for travel if they can transport their children because we, at this point- if they can transport their children because we, at this point, do not have the capacity to do that due to limitations, obviously, constraints.
Do people have to go off island to take this training to be a bus driver? Is there any way we can do it through the community school?
Um, we, we haven't found a way yet for that. We've spoken with Cape Cod Collaborative and unfortunately, it is, it is an off-island training for a bus driver um, and certification, so.
I have a question. Through the chair. Um, are they nerdy, are they, are they nerdy drivers? Who drive those buses and are they um, can they drive school buses or is that church and state?
It's, it's a different type of license. So um, we don't, they cannot know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, mine. Should I go back to you?
No, no, no.
Okay.
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 He tells me your stories, which are all good.
I would like the committee to consider changing the agenda a bit because I think the AP testing is important. And I think all of us are tired and hungry.
I'm so embarrassed right now.
Can I have a motion to amend the agenda? And then bring up uh, the AP testing at our next meeting? Because I, I just think that that's a little too important.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda and bring up the AP at the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Committee discussion and votes to be taken. The meeting minutes. Pauline, do you have any changes?
No, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices?
移到
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Student Council Representative, Catherine?
Um, so recently, the Student Council has been planning for Homecoming, which I'm very excited about. It's going to happen October twenty-fifth to thirtieth. Um, we are planning to do the hallway decorations, which is really exciting because we haven't done them in a long time. And um, we're doing a new thing this year where we're decorating the doorways with a theme. So the hallways will be the classes and then the doorways, um, the students are gonna vote on one theme together. And then each advisory is gonna take from that theme. So I think it's gonna be a lot of fun with the students decorating the doors as a new option for Homecoming. And um, we're also gonna do the floats on Saturday thirty-first, which is gonna be nice. And Spirit Week is gonna happen the same week as Homecoming, so.
October thirty-first?
Um, that's for the floats, but Spirit Week is like twenty-fifth to thirtieth. So yes, five days. And um, other, other things that are happening are like, um, the library is now like open again and students are able to eat lunch. I know they were able to eat lunch before, but a lot of students have been actually going to eat lunch in the library, including myself. It's very nice. And students also have an option to eat in the Hall of the Whale now, which is also pretty good for more space. And um, sports are underway. A lot of students are happy that, you know, the schedule is going back to normal. And sports are doing well, like volleyball is doing well from what I've heard. And um, drama club auditions are happening this Thursday. It's, the play is called Almost Made. And this is also very exciting because the drama club couldn't do their play last year. So this is gonna be a good opportunity for them to get to perform. Yeah, that's mostly it from my app.
Does the Student Council, um, each principal and superintendent send out something each? Do you guys have a newsletter?
Yeah, there is a Student Council newsletter.
Add in, add in that list so you see what's going on?
Yeah, I could probably add some to it.
Alright, cool.
Okay. Agenda for the next meeting, October fifth. So we're gonna add in the AP exams.
We may be able to do a little, um, a little finagling to, to fit everything in. Um, if I may, um, I, I did want to um, suggest that you look at the Horizon, which does propose a retreat date, which, which would be on um, Tuesday night, October twenty-sixth. If it is something that um, the committee would, would, would like to do, then certainly there is a, an opportunity for us to hold a retreat.
Is that a Tuesday?
Tuesday evening, please. Yes.
Why doesn't everybody check your calendars and then you can send something to Beth?
Sure.
So the mix. What hour is it recording?
Uh, evening.
Okay.
With dinner provided.
That seems to be a theme today. Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
移到
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.